Good evening. It's 5:30 PM on Wednesday, March 19, 2025. And this regular meeting of the Sandpoint City Council is now called to order in council chambers at 1123 West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. For the record, I'm Mayor Jeremy Grimm, presiding, also President, our City Councilor, President, Deb Rule, Councillors Justin Dick, Kyle Schreiber, Pam Duquette, and Rick Howard. Joel Espiro will be a few minutes late. Under the city's adopted Code of Ethics and Civility is the Presiding Officer. I'm to identify the law enforcement personnel serving as Sergeant of Arms for this evening's meeting. Tonight, we have Police Chief Corey Coon in the back of the room. If everyone please stand, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a couple of proclamations this evening, and the first is for Strengthening Families to Prevent Child Abuse Month. Whereas as a society, we have a responsibility to protect our children and do everything in our power to ensure they become healthy and productive adults. Whereas we should all be aware of the negative effects of child abuse and neglect and find ways to be actively involved in its prevention. Whereas all members of the community have a role to play in strengthening families and as such can promote and protect families and make positive outcomes for more young children and their families. Whereas as a community, we strive to offer parents the education, support, and skills they need to provide healthy, safe, and nurturing homes for their children and to promote positive childhood experiences to help children grow into resilient, healthy adults. Whereas child abuse and neglect can be reduced by recognizing all families need support and striving to ensure that each family has the support they need to raise their children in a safe, nurturing environment. And whereas many community partners and governmental agencies in Idaho regularly collaborate to promote efforts to eliminate child abuse and give each of our children what they deserve: hope, security, and safety. Whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of these strong partnerships. Whereas a statewide campaign to bring awareness to the need to strengthen families in order to prevent child abuse has been launched through the media, public schools, libraries, social service agencies, nonprofits, and business. And whereas this campaign utilizes the recognizable symbol of the pinwheel, celebrating community partnerships for strengthening the family and protecting all children from abuse and neglect. Now therefore, I, Jeremy Grimm, Mayor of Sandpoint, Idaho, do hereby proclaim April 2025 as Strengthening Families to Prevent Child Abuse Month and encourage our citizens to find ways to increase their participation in efforts to prevent child abuse thereby strengthening the communities in which we live. Proclaim this 19th day of March, 2025. The second and final proclamation is for the Live Give 7B Campaign. Whereas the Live Give 7B Campaign is occurring April 14 through 18, 2025. Whereas the Live Give 7B Campaign encourages residents to support local charitable causes and businesses when making purchases and decisions in their community. Whereas the goal of the Live Give 7B is to cultivate a culture of compassion, camaraderie, and community that benefits all of us to call seven, that call 7B home. And whereas the City of Sandpoint desires to help to raise awareness of the campaign which encompasses a wide variety of local nonprofit organizations and inspires residents to consider donations to our local nonprofits and support local businesses that give back to the community. Now therefore, I, Jeremy Grimm, Mayor of Sandpoint, do hereby proclaim April 14 through 18, 2025 as Live Give 7B Week in the City of Sandpoint and encourage all citizens to join together to give back to the community in a way that is personally meaningful to them. Proclaim this 19th day of March, 2025. That would be Live Give 7B. All right. Next, a report on the city's audited financial statement for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2024, with a presentation from the city's auditor. At this time, I would yield the floor to Finance Director Sarah Lins.
Good evening. On October 2 of 2024, the council entered into a Resolution 2471 with Magnuson, McHugh, and Dottry to audit the financial statements of the city. And they are complete. And tonight, I will turn over the floor to Laura Parisida, the partner at that firm, and she will go through these financial statements and answer any questions. I'm going to, on our website, share and go to this where the public and you guys can also go find this and direct others if they need to go look at the details of this. You go to the, our main website underneath Departments. And then, just trying to move so we can see it, Departments and then Financial Transparency. The very top are audited financial statements and a link to the current year financial statements. All right, Laura.
Okay, hi Sarah, thanks for the introduction. Can you guys still hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, great. So again, my name is Laura. I'm with MMD and we perform the annual audit for the city. And this audit is, I'm gonna jump down just a little bit, sorry Sarah, is required because the city expense greater than $250,000 a year. And then it right there, it mentions a single audit as well, which is required when there are greater than $750,000 in expenditures. We, the city had one last year but did not have one this year, so you'll see that that is no longer included in the financial statements. So one thing I wanted to point out is that in order to be the auditor for the city, we are required to be independent. So we are in no way affiliated with the City of Sandpoint, and that's just, that's a requirement every year for us. So the financial statements are in accordance with governmental accounting standards, and they're quite large. So I was gonna just hit some overall highlights, and if anybody has any questions throughout, I'm happy to answer those. So jumping to page one is the opinion for this year. So I'm happy to say that we issued an unmodified opinion, which essentially means that in our opinion, after we performed testing and looked, performed different procedures on the financial information, in our opinion, the financial statements of the city are materially stated and fairly present the financial position of the city. And essentially, this is the highest level of assurance that can be provided with an audit. So same as last year, no, no changes there. And on page four, this is the start of management's discussion and analysis. This goes pages four through 16, and this is written by management of the city and meant to accompany the financial statements. So as we go through, you'll see there's, you know, a lot of numbers, a lot of line items, and this really kind of tells the story along with that and gives some more insight into what happened during the year, covers some financial highlights. I won't really go through this too much, but it's, it's great to read to get some more information. And also talks about, towards the back of this, some of the outlook for going forward, you know, some things that are expected to be affecting the city in the near term. So jumping now to page 17. This is the start of the audited financial statements. So you'll see at the top of here, Statement of Net Position, this is the, this is your government-wide financial statements. And so essentially, that means this is accrual basis. You'll see this includes a lot of the city's long-term assets and liabilities. Some of those specific, some of the larger ones would be the net pension liability lines that are associated with the Percy Plan, capital assets, which you'll see is, is quite a large area for the city, and long-term debt. And although the city has multiple funds, this specifically is broken into a column for governmental activities and for business activities. Detail of these, of what, you know, is in the different funds that make up these numbers is presented as we get further through the statements. And you'll also see on the far right is a column for the component unit of the city, which is Sandpoint Urban Renewal Agency. Let's just separate it out so you can see that clearly on its own. And the page after this, which is the Statement of Activities, is really just the income statement that accompanies. This is revenue and expense activity for the year on that full accrual government-wide basis. And again, you'll see it's broken out between the governmental activities and the business type activities, which are the water, sewer, bond payment, fund, and sanitation. So nothing that I felt I needed to really call out here, but other than to explain kind of what these are showing to you. And then on page 19 is the start of your governmental financial statements, which are more of a modified accrual basis. So you will see there are some things not included here, such as those capital assets and the debt and the Percy information. But you will see it starts to break out by fund. So on this one, it presents your major funds separately. So for the city, those are General Fund and the Parks Fund. Not really any major changes this year in how this is presented or in the types of categories, but just good to know is the detail for your fund balances. It includes quite a bit of information on what items are restricted, committed, and assigned for future years. After this, on page 20, is again a follow-up in a similar style for revenues and expenses for, or I'm sorry, I jumped to page, page 20 is a, sorry Sarah, I think I jumped a page on you. Right here is the revenues and expenses for the general and the Parks Fund and those other governmental funds. So the piece that I accidentally skipped over ahead of this is a reconciliation that if you were to try to put these two statements side by side, the government-wide and the governmental, this would help you to reconcile what those differences are between the two statements. I just wanted to point that out. And then going to page 22 is a similar statement of reconciling the differences in those income statements between the two styles of statements. The one above was reconciliation to the balance sheets, and this one is reconciliation to the income statements. After this, we start getting into your proprietary funds, which are those business-type funds. This is similar to the government-wide statements in that these are full accruals. So you'll see all activity for these funds in these financial statements. Nothing really, that's a whole lot different here, especially categories-wise, but I did want to jump to your cash flow statement, which is just a couple down on page 25. And what I wanted to point out here is you'll see it's broken out still by fund, but also by type of cash flow activity. So from operating, which is kind of more of day-to-day activities of the city, there's a section for cash flow from finance, financing activities, and also from investing activities. So you'll see in the finance section, there's activity for principal payments on debt. But what I really wanted to point out is just a couple lines down towards the middle, you'll see lines for beginning cash and ending cash, and you'll see there was quite a, quite a large increase this year in that cash amount. So overall positive cash flow activity this year. So after this statement starts the notes to the financial statements, and these run all the way through page 54. So I'll just touch on some highlights and some, some changes that we had this year. Note one that starts out is quite long, it's several pages, but it does cover the city's significant accounting policies, and it also provides some clarification on those different types of statements that I was just talking about, and also covers some of the terminology throughout the financial statements and provides some clarity there for anyone who wants to read through there. And after that, on page 36, yeah, note one goes for quite a while. And on page 36, note five, I always like to point out this footnote, I just think it's really good information. This is a breakdown of the capital asset activity on that first government-wide Statement of Net Position. You'll see this table here is for the governmental activities. There's one for the business-type activities as well on the next page, but it shows purchases of those capital assets for the year as well as disposals, and just helps to kind of reconcile the, the big numbers on that statement and show what that detail is. And then similarly, a couple pages down at note six is just a breakout of those bonds payable, just because there's such a large item on the balance sheet, it's kind of nice to come back here and see what exactly those numbers are. So there's two bonds left, 2012 and 2013, and also shows what those principal payment requirements are next year and for the, the lives of those bonds. And as you go through the notes, you'll see it's really just detailed to provide some more clarification on those balance sheet items. So you'll see notes for leases. And then on page 40, right there at note 11, is just kind of a snapshot of the debt activity for the year. So I think this is always nice to look at. You'll see beginning balances, you'll see there were no additions this year, just principal payments on those, on those debts that the city has. And next, if we go down to, a couple pages down to page 50. I just wanted to point out here that notes 17 and 18 are new this year for an endowment that the city has, that the city established. And note 17 just talks about what that is a little bit. Note 18 is required disclosures for fair value of those investments. So really just wanted to point out that they're new. And on the next page, there are two notes for the SURA that give some more information on that relationship and some of the financial activity of the SURA for the year, especially note 22, which, which goes for, I think, two or three pages. And then after that, that's largely the conclusion of the footnotes. And going to page 55, there is a requirement for your major governmental funds that a schedule is shown for budget versus actual for revenues and expenditures. So for the city, that's the general fund here. And on the next page, that's for the Parks Fund, and it just shows on the left budgeted amounts and in the middle what those actual amounts were and any fluctuations. So again, just good information to have, good to know that those are there. if you remember at the beginning of the financial statements, there was some condensed information on other governmental funds that I mentioned would be broken out in further detail towards the back, and that's, that starts here. These are supplemental schedules to the financial statements. You'll see here, these are the non-major debt service funds. And pretty minimal activity here. And then if we go down a couple pages to 64, similarly, these are the non-major special revenue funds. There's four of these. Each of these has a balance sheet and an income statement, and the totals here will tie into those statements at the beginning of the PDF. And again, here, not really a whole lot of changes. No new funds, no, no major category changes that I would, you know, feel the need to call out here. The last thing I wanted to cover is at page 66. And this is our report on internal controls. So as part of an audit in accordance with governmental standards, we issue a report on internal controls. We don't test internal controls at the city, and we don't provide an opinion on the effectiveness of those controls, but we do report whether we're aware of items that could be significant deficiencies or weaknesses in those controls that we feel would need to be reported. Some of the ways that we look at your internal controls while we're performing the audit is by performing walkthroughs and will, you know, walk through some of those transactions with management, get an understanding of what those internal controls are and those processes are to ensure segregation of duties among those who, you know, work with the financial information. We ask a lot of questions and we look at, you know, policies that the city has. And so those are some of the ways that we look at those. We did not note any weaknesses or deficiencies that we felt needed to be reported here. And management does a really great job each year of preparing for the audit and providing us with the items we need. We have very limited journal entries, and, you know, most of them are posted just for financial presentation purposes, not, not to necessarily correct balances. So that's the last thing that I really wanted to point out, but if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to go over those or try to answer anything.
Thank you so much. Council members, any questions for the auditors at this time, or Sarah, related to the audit?
Do have, if you do want to meet and go over some more detail or come across any questions available.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Howard.
Yeah, thank you, Laura. Thank you for walking us through. I have two general questions, not, not specifics, but in terms of an audit, what, can you give us an example of what would rise to the level of a finding? I know in your, your summary, you said it was a very clean audit, there were no findings. But just to help educate us, what would rise to the level of a finding?
An example, a good example would be if we were to be testing balances. So when we do come out for the audit, we will test various accounts based on a risk-based approach. Basically, we don't look at absolutely everything, but we do look at, you know, bank statements, and we test accounts receivable and accounts payable. And if we were to find errors that were large and that we needed to post large adjustments, basically to state the financials correctly, that could possibly be an error. We didn't come across anything like that, any, you know, materially misstated balances or anything like that this year. If we were looking at internal controls and let's say there was a, you know, an example could be if there's a major process where there is a lack of segregation of duties, maybe only one person looks at that area instead of having checks and balances, that can potentially also be something that we would bring to management's attention and say, you know, hey, there might be a better way to do this. Those are some examples. I don't, does that help?
Yeah, it does. And second question, how unusual is it for a city the size of Sandpoint to have zero findings? I'm, I'm trying to get, is this very normal? Is, is Sandpoint stellar, you know, at the top of the class? Kind of put it in perspective on, for a city the size of Sandpoint to have such a clean audit?
Well, I, I mean, I don't know that I can speak to what's, what's normal necessarily, but I, but I do think the city does an excellent job of preparing for the audit. You know, there's a lot of activity going on throughout the year, and, you know, it's, it's very, it's very well-prepared. And again, just, we have a very limited adjustments that we have to post, and so I think they do a great job of getting that ready.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other council questions or engagement on this? Excellent. Thank you so much, Laura. I, I have one, just a quick one. I recollect some statutory limitations on how many years our auditor can audit. Is that, is that a correct recollection? Do we have to change our auditor every four years or something like that?
I, we've had this auditor since I've started. And so it's been about seven years, I believe, and we could definitely look into how often that is. I don't know if there's a statutory requirement, but it is good to look at that every once in a while, yes.
Thanks, sir. Excellent. Moving on to number item four, next we'll have the fiscal year 2024 fourth quarter financial report. And again, this is to Sarah.
And I don't have anything more to add because this is the report. I just have that attached or what we went into. You can look at all the different quarters in there. So if you want to drill down, look at anything else, then you can. So there's nothing more to add besides detached.
Anything going once, twice for Sarah on the end of year?
Thank you, Sarah.
Welcome.
Yeah, good job, Sarah. Thank you for all the hard work you do. If the council and public's not aware, these audits take place remotely these days. Used to be a team would come to City Hall and pour through all the records. Today, they get a access password to all of our computer systems and can check every single entry and balance and statement. So I know I've been part of this to some degree, and it's quite thorough. So good job. Keep up the great work, and thanks for your excellent, excellent integrity. Moving on, next we'll move on to general announcements and reports, starting with the mayor's announcements.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Sorry to interrupt.
Madam Clerk, you're fine.
One quick note that Councillor Spurrel has brought.
Right, thank you so much, Madam Clerk. Welcome, Councillor Spurrel. We'll now move on to general announcements and reports. I guess I have a couple to start. First, I want to congratulate the ADECA, Sandpoint High School ADECA Club. I see in the paper, they again continued a streak of dominance with a winning score of 36,705 at the state competition. So incredible, excellent young minds. Sandpoint High School, congratulations. Also in the paper today, there's an update, if you saw it in the B, about area growth and state growth. You might look at that. It doesn't qualify, typically these census growth updates between the senses are estimates, but it did throw out a figure that I thought was interesting. In the past four years, Sandpoint's grown a total of 4.12%, estimating our population at 10,886. I don't believe that includes our vacancy rate and our second homeowners, but it may. But just for reflection, our comp plan anticipates growth about two and a half percent. So, you know, that 4.12 over four years is significantly below that. So although it feels like we're growing fast, we're kind of steady, steady and plugging away a little over 1% a year. And to that point, some good news on the housing front. I visited with some property managers this week, and some of our multifamily units are seeing vacancy rates of 15%, which is, according to this individual, some of the highest they've ever seen in the history of these units. So we do have vacant units, which supply and demand is, we are all aware, means that prices may be coming down. So that's good for economic development and attracting employers to our community. Next, I just want to touch briefly on the Next, I just want to touch briefly on the, some legislation that's passing through down in Boise. There's a new Senate bill. I've sent you an email. I believe it's eleven sixty-two that is considering some pretty significant changes to short-term rentals throughout the state that would effectively strip local municipalities, any ability to regulate them other for health, other than health and safety. I'll be testifying tomorrow on that in the committee and opposing that legislation. If you have any questions or want to get further engaged, let me know. And I will follow up and keep you abreast how that's going. And then finally, committees and commissions. I am now the chairperson of the Arts Historic and Cultural, working with Ellie out in the audience tonight. Simply a reflection of limited staff time to commit to these committees. And I guess in summary, I just want to brief the council that our committees, I'm thrilled that they are up and running. They are doing great work. With anything new, there are growing pains and I have heard frustration from both committee members. And I know internally, we have some frustrations facilitating and managing those committees in terms of staff time. One example was we had a staff member, a fairly significant staff member that spent almost twelve percent of their week in committee meetings two weeks ago. So we're tracking internally what kind of commitment from a staff liaison time these committees are taking. There's a general sense that the committees are frustrated because they don't necessarily have direct focus from, from the council and mayor on what work they should be doing, which results in some of them going out and exploring. We've got now some committees with subcommittees that have subcommittees. So I will be meeting with you all individually and then we'll be discussing as a body sort of some suggestions on just sort of a check-in after six months of having these committees. How are they working? Are they being effective? Are they doing the work that we intended them to do? And how can we do that better? So those are my announcements, council. Let's start with other announcements. Let's start on the left. Council President Rule.
I just, as you're speaking about committees, we'll stay on that topic. Pedestrian and Bicycle Advisory Committee met on March thirteenth. The mayor was present for that meeting and we appreciated his attendance. We discussed the preliminary plat for the Diehere subdivision and how pathways and sidewalks would work with that. And then we also, the Development Review Subcommittee brought some frustrations forward about current methods of gathering information on the current projects. So that's one of the bumps we're going through, as the mayor said, trying to have a more concise way to have the committees have specific work to do. Intersection Subcommittee reported on different curb ramp directions and widths and interests in some consistency and how all that works from an engineering perspective. The Multimodal Transportation Committee discussed the downtown Phase Three project and how they can be more involved in that and potentially setting up some demonstration, traffic flow things that are very temporary. As that design starts to move forward, they'd like to be involved. Then we had a presentation on the Fourth Avenue Sidewalk Project that Public Works is getting underway and how we can be most helpful in assessing that and giving some public input. And then our meeting more or less ended at that time.
Thank you, Council President Rule. Let's come down the row. Councilman Schreiber.
Yes, thanks. The Urban Forestry Commission held a special meeting at the specific request of council to gather recommendations regarding the downtown parking lot revitalization. We received several comments from the public encouraging the city to preserve the existing trees. And I'm happy to say that despite being down one commissioner, leading to the possibility of a tie vote, we were able to come to a unanimous recommendation. You might remember there was six spots for trees on the design that staff presented to council and balancing the, the desire to preserve trees and also move forward with the project. We're going to, the recommendation is to preserve the two existing trees at the north end of each parking row, plus the grove of aspirin or grove of cedar at the south end of the eastern row, as well as a maple tree midway in that row. The other two locations, the south end of the western row and this middle of this western row, don't have existing trees. So new trees will be planted there by staff.
Thank you, Councilman Trevor. Councilwoman Duquette.
Yes, Sustainability Committee had a special meeting on March twelfth. Only special because they had missed a couple of months of meetings. I was unable to attend because of the date they chose. They reviewed the definition of sustainability for the comprehensive plan. There were very minor changes. As I understand, I bring that as an action item another time to get the council to.
Correct.
Okay, so that will be later. The committee people had been checking the comp plan chapters, asking questions about how they were being sustainable. And they, they created a matrix, Ms. Pielie did. And they were going through to see what are not priorities and where the matrix intersected. A lot of the questions were kind of on the same thing. And then the roundtable, Ms. Moon provided a brief introduction to Meredith Todd, who is a sustainability planner at the city of McCall. And she is going to speak at the next meeting. And that's it. And then they were joined.
Thank you, Councilwoman Duquette. I'll jump in representing the Arts Cultural and Historic Commission. They met last week and they are working on a walking tour brochure for the downtown walking tours this summer, working on securing volunteers to lead those. They are moving forward with their silver box art program, which brings in new art each year for those displays downtown. Looking for putting a call out for art on those. And finally, they are working on the Big Belly Dumpster Wraps. We're soliciting grade school art to wrap two of those Big Belly dumpsters. So those are sort of the highlights from the Arts Historic and Culture Committee. We also talked about potentially a, we have a grant in for, to SHPO, State Office of Historic Preservation, for ten thousand dollars to help with the design guideline for the down overlay district, historic overlay district, if we move forward with that. And discussed the existing federal funding uncertainty for that and how we will apply it. So that's pretty much the highlight.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question about that?
Go ahead, Councilman Dick.
You know, there was some discussion about needing some support to make sure that we're awarded the grant and that may come in the form of a letter of intent from yourself or from this council. I understand that the committees are tough right now. They're getting better in their inaugural year. Staff time is spread out pretty thin. Is that something that we're able to commit to?
Yes. Thank you, Councilman Dick. I will be drafting a letter based on what I heard from SHPO. I will draft a letter that meets their needs to show that we are moving forward with the intent and would utilize that.
Awesome. Thank you very much. I know the commission appreciates that as well too. And they're eager to get working on it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I also throw a quick comment out on your walking tour for when you go to your next meeting?
Go for it, council.
The Native Plant Society has also wanted to do a plant, a native plant walking tour in town. I'm suggesting perhaps if you got together, it would be a joint venture.
Yeah, that sounds amazing. And I apologize, Councilman Dick, you're actually the council liaison on that. I'm the staff.
Welcome to the commission.
So I actually, I think I covered your report before you. I do apologize. No, no intent to overstep. Did I miss anything?
You're great.
Okay. Any other commentary announcements, Councilman Dick?
Nope, I'm good. Thank you.
Councilman Howard, any announcements? And Councilman Espiro, any announcements?
Yeah, we had our monthly Parks and Rec Commission meeting, which you can find on YouTube. I encourage you to go check it out to get all the details, but mainly the Bonner County Historical Society Museum. They proposed about expanding the Lakeview Park facility due to inadequate storage and community space. They asked that the commission make a motion recommending to council that they be given permission to proceed with the more detailed development concept, including stakeholder meetings. The proposed museum expansion plan will be added to the April agenda. And the other item was just more frustration with the committee and how to get things done. But again, it's still new and you already addressed that. So we look forward to that. So we don't have committees upon committees, et cetera.
Thank you, Councilman Spiro. Just one final follow-up, and I believe Holly Ellis, our Public Works Director, will touch on it. I do want to note that we do have a representative from the governor's office in the audience tonight. And the governor's office and we've made clear that the wastewater treatment plant is a growing and imminent concern for the city. We did have two incidents in the last month. I believe DEQ was here, was that today, Holly, for the audit? We did have a pump failure that led to overflow. I think the council's aware of that. And then just this, this weekend with that rain on snow, we had a E. coli event where there was, I believe, and Holly can correct me and add details, there was a release above limits into the river. So that plant is continuing to tick. And the staff's doing an incredible job managing a facility that is woefully expired. And I guess what I'd say is I'm thrilled that Idaho DQ is here today. To my understanding, it's the first time they've ever done a full onsite audit of the plant. I don't know what Devon, our operator, and Holly went through in that. I look forward to an update either tonight or tomorrow. But we are proceeding with the preliminary engineering report and Holly will fill in the rest. But I just wanted to bring the council and the public up to speed on the fact that we've had some, some challenges down there in the last two weeks. In this time of year, it's typical with the rain on snow events and the limitation of the plant. So with that, I will now yield the floor to staff for some reports from the departments. Cheryl Hughes, our Central Services Director is walking up. Good evening, Cheryl.
Good evening, councilors and mayor. Central Services is plugging along. Couple updates, just so to make you aware. For the last three days, I-Crimp was on site and provided a supervisor training. And it was hosted by Sandpoint PD. And other neighboring agencies were also in attendance at this training. And they came from Lewiston, Boundary County, Bonners Ferry, Rathdrum. And we had attendees in supervisory roles from all of our departments. I think it was very beneficial. We had really good feedback. So it was a great training. And we're now going to start planning a mandatory citywide harassment training that we really want to incorporate this once a year for all city employees to take place. I-Crimp puts it on free of charge. They will come to, to us and put it on. We can invite other agencies to also come participate in it. And we're also, we are working on the festival and farmer's market leases. You'll see the lease for farmer's market come across in the council meeting for April sixteenth. And let's see, and then the last thing is you will see on our consent, I've talked about the last few meetings, the senior center lease, Fourth Amendment, the Baldi communication site leases on there, as well as a couple personnel and salary admin policy changes that we're requesting. So is there any questions for Central Services?
Anything, council members? Excellent. Sure. I just have a brief one. Have you heard anything from the festival about the pending legislation that could potentially impact their operations as it relates to firearms and their performers?
I have not heard anything since that has recently come out. I haven't received any feedback at this point. But I have not met with the staff member that's been working with them.
Okay, would that be Haley?
Yeah, we're supposed to be meeting tomorrow on both of those.
Can you just keep me abreast of that? I just want to emphasize that impacts of the festival could severely impact our revenue. The festival provides a significant amount of revenue for the operation and maintenance of that facility. And any potential impacts to their operation may require us to have to adjust our planning for the year. So just keep me abreast. Thank you.
I will check in. Mr. Mayor, may I speak briefly on that?
Speak or do you have questions?
Not, not Cheryl. I was just trying to help. But it's House Bill three seven six and Veronica Nolton came to the town hall and shared her concerns. And you can write, she has sent me who to write to, to request that because that's part of our economic income, to write to the senators in that committee to ask them to vote against that bill. So that's something I can pass on through email if anybody is interested.
Thank you, Councilwoman Duquette. House Bill would be our, I think, our representative. So that's excellent. Thanks for the update and thanks, Cheryl. Appreciate it. Any other department updates or briefs? See the police chief coming up, Chief Corey Kuhn. Hi, Chief.
Good evening.
You winning today?
We're always winning. Yeah, I mostly say good morning, but I didn't wake up that late today to make a morning. So it is good evening. Just one thing to make the council aware of. If you're, if you're not aware of, we're seeing some pauses on some of our federal grants. So normally this time we're coming before you, asking for some approval for some grants. We had started one through the state, which is a federal grant that we usually use for our traffic enforcement, our aggressive driving, our crosswalks, those type of things. We just got told this week that all of those are paused because there's no funding at this moment. They didn't give us a deadline when it's going to open up. So internally, what we're looking at is we have a couple of open positions. We've been sitting on those for just a little bit. So there's some salary percent savings in those funds. I want to work with the mayor and with Sarah to take some of that funding and roll it over to the summer activities and use that to help offset some of those costs that we're going to lose. We normally apply for about fifty thousand dollars is what we're approved for in those grant fund, which usually equates for us for overtime hours that we use to, for those activities. So we're losing that, coming up with a plan to try to offset some of those costs and still hit our crosswalks and some of those other areas that we think needs to, need some extra attention.
Thank you, Chief. So fifty thousand dollars out of the budget, expected federal grants or revenue that passes through ITD. You, I believe you said we use primarily that for overtime to pay for these extra enforcements. Is that correct?
Yes.
And so fifty thousand dollars, imagining that's somewhere around five hundred, six hundred hours of overtime. I mean, I don't know the math, but.
Yeah, a fair amount of overtime. Fair amount of overtime for the guys to accomplish those tasks.
And, and those tasks, I mean, you mentioned that there are crosswalk enforcement, drunken driving.
We do, yep. Aggressive driving, seat belts, crosswalks, aggressive driving, stop signs would tie in that, speeding would tie into that. Now, we usually focus on some of our higher areas where DUIs are normally done. But we're going to have to try to offset some of that with some of our overtime hours.
So is the impact going to be less enforcement in those areas likely without that revenue?
Yes. I mean, the, the goal is hopefully we can offset some of that with some salary percent savings, but we will see a decrease on some of those days because of stopping levels, because of lack of funding.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for Chief Kuhn? Holly Ellis, Public Works Director. How was the audit, Holly?
Good evening. We had our compliance officer with DEQ come up, two of their folks came up to tour our, or inspect our wastewater treatment. folks came up to tour our, or inspect our wastewater treatment plant today. So it started with a desktop audit. So Devon and I sat with them for four hours going over paperwork. And then they went around and toured the plant. So we have a new compliance officer. And she seems to be really motivated and I think she's going to be a really great partner with us going forward. They came up, the last time they've done an inspection, I believe, was 2019. They have, they have been up here before, I learned. It's just been a while. So they came up and they were able to see the plant and see some of our challenges. And they're going to be able to help us going forward. So they came up and scheduled this inspection as a result of a notice of deficiency that they sent. So there was an event where we had a pump failure. We're still trying to figure out the purpose or the reason behind the pump. Essentially, old wiring, power source, SCADA issue prevented one of our pumps from working. And they're, they call it an upset is the DEQ official language. So there's more to come. Once we finalize our investigation and document our corrective steps, we'll have a formal response back to DEQ on what our fix is. And of course, the public will notify them on all the ins and outs of what happened.
Thanks, Holly. And Holly, can you just touch on maybe just a brief update to the council on, we're at a preliminary engineering report? And I know you've been in touch with our bond council or expected to go forward with that effort this fall? Can you just fill in any blanks that you want to add to on that?
Yeah. So our preliminary engineering report is moving along per schedule. So we plan to have a draft in April. So in the next few weeks, we should see a draft and we'll present that to council and the public and make that available for everyone to review and comment. Kind of in parallel, we have a few efforts to also kick off. One is our permitting, environmental permitting efforts and that's a required step that we can kick off and then getting ready for bond. So in November, we'll go out for a bond vote. So we'll get a bond council and, and engage that activity. So right now we'll be working on a preliminary engineering report, environmental permitting and getting ready for a bond in November. At the same time, I learned today that DEQ, we are pretty low down on their list for permit review or number 60, I think, if I remember correctly.
That one six or six zero?
Six zero. I think we have an opportunity or we're going to try to see if we can get pushed to the top. What that helps is when we do reconstruct our plant, we're not really sure right now what our permit requirements are going to be. We might be able to push that to the top. So we have less unknowns when the project does get here and we're constructing. So hope, hopeful to work with DEQ and figure out what our permanent requirements are going to be. So those are the four big efforts that we're working on right now.
Thanks, Holly. Sorry to sidetrack you. You probably hit a list of things you wanted to go through.
Oh, no, that's okay. From a project update, we have our sewer water main, or sorry, sewer mainline project. That's occurring on Boyer Avenue right now. So they've got Boyer closed off during the daytime and reopened at night. Appreciate the public's patience while they're replacing the manholes on Boyer. They should be off of Boyer by the end of this week. So, and they'll be heading into the alley. So the big disruption is this week while they're in Boyer. And for the week, next week, please observe the detour signs that are posted. Bridge rehab is continuing per schedule. They will be finished by the end of the month. The left station project at City Beach in Superior is also going per schedule. And an update, branch pickup will be scheduled for next month. So folks, please, when you open up your next utility bill, there will be scheduling the details and information for our annual branch pickup.
And the parking lot, Holly, that's expected to go out to bid next week, you think?
It's expected to go out to bid tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Excellent.
Be posted, advertised for two weeks and construction to start in April and be completed first week in May.
And counsel, just so you know, Holly and I worked on a notice to all businesses in the area. The general thought right now is because that parking lot will likely be closed for three weeks. We worked with the police chief on a plan for non-enforcement of, was it three, two, two and three hour zones? No, three hour zones?
Three to four hour zones to not enforce parking.
So we'll be making on-street parking available to employees and users who have been displaced by the construction activity. So we will basically make on-street parking and a couple of zones free so that people can still park downtown during this construction. But there obviously will be some inconvenience for those weeks. Any council questions for Holly? Thanks so much, Holly. Appreciate all the great work.
Thanks.
Jason Welker, Planning and Community Development Director. Good evening, Jason.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Got a shorter list of updates for you tonight than last time. I'm going to start with an update on our search for lifeguards. We have had the position posted for over a month now. We recently increased the hourly salary or the wage for the lifeguard position from $14 to $16 in the hopes that would increase applicants. We've also had three weeks of ads running in the local papers advertising those positions. And as of this afternoon, I don't think we've actually received any applicants. So just a, an update for you, we're, our rec department is, is you know, doing their best to recruit and attract lifeguards for our City Beach lifeguard program. So far, no applicants. Also in recreation, we've got a couple new rec programs starting in the next week or two. Registration open now for doubles tennis league. We've got 10 weeks of indoor play for the spring season at the sports center. That'll begin first week of April and run through the first week of June. That is a revenue generating program for the facility. We expect to see a good boost to revenues as a result of the participation in that always popular league. Then we have fly, the fly fishing course, I think I mentioned it two weeks ago, registration is open now. Trout Unlimited and the city rec division are partnering. All revenues from that will go towards the sports facility as well. The instructors are entirely volunteers. We're handling all the registration and operate, providing the facilities for the, for the program. There's going to be casting lessons done on the courts inside and classroom sessions in the community room. And those, that program's going to run over three Saturdays in April for three hours on those Saturdays. And then after the sports center section of that wraps up in early May, they're going to do actually an on-water fly casting course as well as part of it. So encourage your friends who are interested in getting into fly fishing to sign up for that. It's available now at sandpointadaho.gov in the Recreation Programs section of our website. Parks, we've got a lot going on with the Parks Commission. Maeve presented a kind of a menu of parks capital improvement projects. And there is currently a survey that's been sent out to the Parks Commissioners, asking them to rank their priorities for the next five to 10 years of parks CIP projects. This is in preparation for the development impact fee study that's going to, that's ongoing. And those consultants will be here, as I mentioned last time, at the beginning of April. So Maeve has been directed to basically work with the Parks Commission, get that five to 10-year park CIP plan ready for presentation as part of the parks development impact fee determination that's going on. Update on the parking management plan. Engagement continues. We're on like month three now of public engagement on that. This morning, the mayor and I were on KRFY Community Radio from eight to nine AM. The podcast is already up on krfy.org. The main topic of conversation was the proposed parking management plan. So if you want to hear kind of that conversation, the deep dive, Suzie and Chris Bester had some great questions. We got into the weeds about the engagement that we've done and what we've learned through the development of that proposal. Last Thursday, a parking satisfaction survey went out. As of today, we've received over a thousand responses to that. The mayor is going to send out an email blast to our 2,000-plus utility customers so that we can get a larger sampling of city residents. So far, only about 40% of our respondents are city residents. So we're trying to increase the sample size of city residents on that survey. There have been some really interesting takeaways from the survey from the thousand responses we've received so far. Let's see, last week, myself and Holly presented to the Greater Sandpoint Area Chamber of Commerce, the entire 40 minutes was dedicated to parking. Holly presented the, the plan for the city parking lot resurfacing project. And for about 30 minutes, we had a discussion with the chamber representatives about how paid parking and managing Sandpoint's parking supply would impact businesses. To get a better idea of how downtown businesses would be affected, tomorrow morning, right here at eight o'clock is a Downtown Business Association Business Owners Basically Roundtable. We're bringing in, I think, Justin Joel. I think you guys have been helping recruit businesses. We sent an email blast out to over 40 downtown business owners. And we're hoping to get a good representation from those employers downtown whose employees count on city parking. So we're going to try to understand how downtown businesses and their employees might be affected by any change to parking downtown. The latest draft of the plan, a couple highlights to point out things that have changed based on feedback. We, we're now proposing six hours of free parking at City Beach for city resident pass holders. That, that's really the number one thing we've learned through this engagement is people are concerned and anxious about how city residents might be excluded from their public waterfront. So, you know, most people say six hours is a, is a day at the beach. So we're, we're now proposing that a city resident parking pass just includes all the time city residents would need for a day at the beach. So, so that's the current draft of the proposal. Other changes, we're proposing eliminating the, the time limit on four hour, what is currently four hour street parking to, to better provide downtown employees with places to park that doesn't require them to leave their, their place of employment every three hours to avoid getting a ticket. That would free up about 186 parking spaces downtown, increasing the availability of all-day street parking by 65% over what is currently available downtown Sandpoint. So that's another change we are exploring. So far, over 200 of the written responses on the survey have mentioned the term parking garage. I just wanted to bring that up because everybody seems to agree, at least a large percentage of the respondents seem to think that we should be exploring building a parking garage in Sandpoint. And just to remind you, one of the, the reasons for considering paid parking is that we need to demonstrate that there's a revenue source to fund ongoing maintenance and eventual construction of a parking garage. So just wanted to put that out there. I did a word search today and then read dozens of them. And 200 respondents have already mentioned the need for a parking garage downtown. So I don't know if those folks also think a parking garage would be free, but certainly you need a funding source to build a parking garage. The last update for you is on planning. I just want to give you kind of a big picture. I went through our, our planning shared document where we track, you know, ongoing applications. Right now we have, just, this is just a sample of the permits that we're working on in the planning department. We have a planned unit development near the charter school. We have a multifamily conditional use permit near the fairgrounds. We have a subdivision on industrial land near the airport, a modified area of city impact, which went through the Planning and Zoning Commission last night and will come to you next month. We have several site plan reviews for new commercial and residential developments downtown. And we are talking to the Planning and Zoning Commission about some potential code amendments regarding parking downtown as well. And that's just a small sampling of what we have going on in the planning department. We can't get into too many details around that, but certainly in the next couple of months, you'll be hearing in this, in this meeting forum, several planning related issues. So.
Thank you, Councilman Welker. That's a lot. I know you're juggling a lot. Council members, do you have specific questions for council, I mean, Director Welker?
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple. I'll be quick.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Duquette.
People that wanted the parking garage, could you find out if they're residents or not?
Yeah, we absolutely can. And once we get, you know, the, the survey is going to stay open through the end of March. And then we will, you know, download some of the data from that and then we can sort by residency. So we can kind of compare answers of city residents versus non-city residents. I'm not going to do too much deep dive because we're still getting, you know, dozens of responses a day right now.
Yeah, along the lines of the survey comments, I emailed you and asked you how you're finding those. Like Helen said, she had read them. I cannot figure out how to read those comments.
So for the first day that the survey is posted, the, the responses were visible to all. I've actually disabled that, but I will share if, if council is interested. Share those survey responses with you all. Knot of heads, would you be interested in having access to see those as they come in? If the mayor's okay with that, I'd enable that as well.
I, I, I'm fine with it. Depending on the time suck for you.
Oh, no, it'd take me two minutes to send a link to all of you. So you can just log in and just view the responses. I, I mean, we, we may end up making all those public. I can tell you they're all being read. It's a voluminous survey response right now, but I'm checking it a couple of times a day just to see how the results are as they.
Yeah, I wouldn't have time to read all of them, but I would love to.
Sure.
Check that out. And then quickly on the lifeguards.
Yeah.
I appreciate the increase in the pay. Looking at the budget, what was budgeted for the lifeguards? Has anybody checked how much higher we could go if we did just like weekend and holiday lifeguards? $16 again is, is an increase. But my granddaughter is going to make $18.50 at Taco Bell and that's something's wrong. I mean, the lifeguards have responsibility. I don't know. I just, I'm trying to find a way to lure some potential lifeguards so that we can at least get some going. So that's just a question to think if we could talk about it somehow, somewhere else.
Do you have thoughts on that, Councilman Welker? I, I think when we discussed, we were talking about incrementally exploring what is that, that level that's going to trigger?
And maybe nothing. Maybe nobody wants it. I don't know. We have to try.
Yes, we are trying.
Somebody would like to be a lifeguard. Used to be a great job is what I thought.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for what you're doing on that incremental increase.
Any other council questions for Councilman, I mean, Director Welker?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Schreiber.
Yeah, so correct me if I'm wrong, but I seem to remember that the Lakeview Park Boat Ramp and Parking Lot are not included in the parking plan. Is that correct?
After, the, the original draft only contemplated the downtown and City Beach parking facilities. But in my original presentation, the Planning and Zoning Commission, back in January, whenever that was, I did imply that in the future, we'd be looking at boat launch fees. Since they're kind of part and parcel, if we're going to do parking, paid parking at the City Beach, you need to look at boat launch fees as well. So yes, the, the newer version does include boat launch fees at the Memorial Field Boat Launch. But not necessarily paid parking there. So yeah, it does include boat launch fees at the Memorial Boat Launch.
Excellent. Thank you. Yeah, I fielded some questions from the public who were concerned that only charging fees at City Beach would drive
Oh, no, yeah.
a lot of boat launchers to our neighborhoods and our
Yeah.
neighborhood streets would be lined with boat trailers.
Which they already are, but it would be worsened dramatically if we didn't charge at one of our two boat launches.
Awesome. All right. Appreciate you being on top of that.
Yep. Okay.
Any other council questions for Director Welker?
Thanks.
Thank you, Jason. And I don't see the fire chief here, but oh, there he is. Anything to update us on, Chief?
Um, just a, just a quick, we had our, our big thing was last, last council meeting, but just a quick update. We're just at Sandpoint Fire, really trying to take advantage of the weather change. When it, when you get out, start getting out of the cold, start getting out of the wet and the sun comes out. So it's a, it's kind of, kind of awesome for us because we can kind of get out of our mood and get back out in the streets and do some training. So we're taking advantage of that. We did, did some training. I want to say it was this month. It was probably a week or so ago, did some training with our neighboring auto aid partners as well as EMS and Lifelight. We did some landing zone training over at the high school. Brought the helicopter in, just kind of went through familiarization training with that. Some of the safety aspects of setting up the landing zone and the requirements is a good refresher. We like to try to do that at least once a year. Sometimes we can't. It just kind of depends on how the schedules fall. We also today, today was kind of, they went out today and did some emergency vehicle operator driving, just setting up the course, driving the trucks around. We talk a lot about streets and how we want them to look and how we're going to, you know, the different projects and stuff, but that doesn't recuse us. We still have to go out and practice. So that kind of helps out. Got some leadership training in this week. Got some work coming up at the end of April. And that's, that's kind of where we're at right now. But yeah, I'm just, you know, just trucking right on along. Everything seems to be going good.
Thanks, Chief. Council members, any question for Fire Chief Gavin? Chief, I've just got a couple, one, a statement and one, just an update for the council. First, you may have seen this afternoon, at the federal level, it looks like there's going to be consideration for a total reorganization of FEMA and how funding is dispersed for emergency responses, both locally and state. That seems to be the direction. And I just want the council and the public to know, the fire chief is leading an effort to prepare this community, at least the city of Sandpoint, for a variety of emergency responses, a three-ring binder with radios, coordination, pre-stocking and thoughtful resource allocation, working with all the departments in terms of staff and resource allocation, working with all the departments in terms of staff and equipment. So we are doing that work right now. And then the, the second thing, Chief, I was disturbed to see on the front page of our newspaper on the B this week, the fatality, the picture of a fatality from up north. And I saw that the photo was provided by Northside Fire, I believe it was at least. And I just want to make sure that you and our community knows if there's ever an unfortunate fatality in this community, I never want you releasing any photos of, of something like that. I think that's totally inappropriate for the family members and victims involved. So I just want to make sure that we'll never be doing anything like that when I'm mayor.
No, we won't be.
Thank you, Chief. I think that covers our council reports. Moving on, next we'll proceed with public comment portion of the meeting. If you wish to speak and haven't yet completed a signup form, please do so and hand it to a staff member at the back of the room. If you'd like to speak on any item included on this evening's agenda under the consent calendar or old or new business, that's not a hearing, now is your opportunity to do so. For purposes of a general public forum, you're welcome to comment on any topic pertinent to the business of the city that is not included on the agenda. Those attending remotely who wish to speak may raise their hand on Zoom at this time. I'd like to make everyone aware that the city does have a public policy on meeting decorum. The rules are posted just outside the chamber entry doors. In summary, I would ask that everyone please be pleasant and respectful. Make no derogatory statements about others, including city staff, not be disorderly or disruptive. No calling out, clapping or holding up signs, et cetera. Please note that the council cannot take testimony on any planning related matter outside of official public hearing. Public comment time is for comment only. No questions or debate. You are welcome to contact the mayor during regular business hours if you have any questions or concerns. Again, this is your opportunity to speak on items listed on the consent calendar or other general business items or on an item of general nature relevant to the city of Sandpoint. This is the only public comment time that will be offered to you this evening. When it's your turn to speak, please state your name and whether you reside in the city limits of Sandpoint. Each speaker will have up to three minutes. And with that, Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak during the public comment time?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Derek Mulgrew.
Good evening, Mr. Mulgrew.
Good evening, Mr. Griff, Mr. Mayor, Counselor. It's a pleasure to be in front of you. I'll be staring at that, watching it go down and making sure that you guys can all take a breath that we won't be here for three hours like we were in two, two and a half years ago for the planned unit development approval, unanimous approval by this body that I was thrilled about and I know you were too. I just want to touch on a couple time points and I do duly respect that this is not a time to debate the, the development. I think it's a really unfortunate situation that, that I have to come here in the public comment.
Mr. Mulgrew, can I just pause you? I don't mean to interrupt. I'll give you extra time. But it's my understanding you have engaged legal counsel on this issue and that you, your legal counsel is working with our legal counsel. So I just want to bring that to the attention of the council. And I don't know if our legal counsel has any direction in terms of commentary made on this subject tonight.
I can just affirm that we do have a meeting scheduled with Mr. Mulgrew's legal counsel for Friday afternoon. And we just would want to caution you not to jeopardize your, any future appeal opportunity that you might have with this public comment.
Appreciate that. I just want to say again that I am, can we reset the, thank you so much. It's really unfortunate that I have to be here on a public comment to get in front of you all. The system is not allowing an applicant to ever get to counsel who's responsible for the decisions. And it's really unfortunate that, yes, I did have to retain legal counsel after hundreds of attempts to bring forth to you all who approved unanimously a plat, a zone change and a P U D for three, two, two hundred and forty-three residential units, multifamily, fee simple townhomes duplexes that are for rent. But the majority of the subdivision is fee simple housing, which we really need desperately here. And it's attached housing, so it's efficient for builders. It's fee simple, so everybody can get conventional financing on it. It's a price point that, that maybe isn't, it's underrepresented in our town. And so you may have noticed in your council packet that, you know, you've received this letter that's dated in March, March, excuse me, March third. It's actually, it came on March thirteenth. So if they drafted the, the letter earlier, then this is a mistake or it was intentional. I was supposed to be here with our, my development agreement and final plat. And it's referenced that, it's references ten dot three dot ten. If no construction has begun within two years after the development is granted, I've installed an entire public street, all the utilities, the water main back to Boyer, and it's been signed off by your engineer in October. It was initiated in August, so I've clearly met that requirement. And the code also states that clearly there's an extension that's available to the applicant as well. And that was never offered, but I just wanted to get in front of you and let you know it's unfortunate that an applicant doesn't have access to this body during the process when you get to a point where you want to bring forward what you're proposing to council to make the final decision on a plat, a development agreement, and there's no forum to do that. So that's, um, that's the summary of why I had to come here during the public conduct. And I'm genuinely not as a resident of the city standpoint, I'm a Bonner County resident. I'm really disappointed that I had to retain legal counsel just to communicate with our city. So thank you for the time. Thanks for the extension, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mulgrew. And just for the record, on any items related to what Mr. Mulgrew discussed, he was a former client of mine. I will be recusing myself moving forward, just so the council and the public's aware. I will not be involved in these discussions or moving forward. He's not currently a client, but he was a client several years ago and on portions of this project. Any other public comment, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Rebecca Holland.
Good evening, Ms. Holland.
Good evening, Jeremy. Good evening, Council. For the record, my name is Rebecca Holland and I am a Bonner County resident. And I'd like to call Sandpoint my hometown. I took a bunch of little notes there throughout this meeting. And real quick on the lifeguard situation, I'm glad to see it's increased. I'm wondering if they're running any ads at the Cedar Post or going actually to Sandpoint High School or the Clark Fork High School and directly engaging with the kids. They're not necessarily reading ads in the paper, but that would be a good place to go. I agree with Councilwoman Duquette that it's a great job. Many of us liked that when we were kids and it's very responsible position. So it should receive more than Taco Bell. Let's see, the other thing was the, the, what you mentioned in the beginning, though wastewater pump failure, that's very troubling. And if this is true, it's been since twenty thirteen, there was an inspection. That seems not so good. And I just want to say that, you know, three minutes to cover any time here, whoops, see where I'm at already, is really tough in doing a public comment as well as addressing any issues. It used to be we could come and talk for, you know, have a moment for three minutes to, to, to do a public comment and also three to address any issue. The last meeting, I have a public comment issue I'm, I'm bringing to you. I'm going to finish it, I hope. And then secondly, I was really concerned about a project coming up for what we like to call malfunction junction. So anyway, to that point, I'll go to my meet where I left off. And I was at the time saying I am pressing for this council to direct legal to clean up the poorly created decorum ordinance. Never again should residents be treated as poorly as the Stapleton Shelby Council did when thirty people came into this chamber to express their view on Traverse Park. It had a bad effect that hangs over this town. And to that, I'd like to add, last week I attended a forum on the First Amendment rights with Chief Corey Coon, Peacekeeper Eldon Renner and an attorney from Clark Court Lane. It came to our attention that the Sandpoint does not have an ordinance that requires anyone working security to be clearly identified or has Sandpoint spelled out the course of action they must follow. It needs to be clear to all, they do not have the authority of local police. I'd like to mention that the former mayor Carrie Logan, to her credit, following the herding crowd descending on Farmer's Market with a bullhorn several years ago with their, what I would call righteous indignation, I was there. Council quickly passed an ordinance addressing this problem. I request that council quickly pass an ordinance addressing this issue. I request that council.
All respect, I'll give you a couple more, a little bit more time, but.
Yeah, I'm, I'm reading as fast as I can. And that's, Chris, please direct your legal to address both of these important ordinances ASAP. And I got one, hold on. And flat, three minutes is hard to address anything else. Give me a couple more minutes, couple of quick comments. Stormwater.
Someone in the audience, do we have a provision for that?
Mr. Mayor, that's only during
Public hearings, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Time is up for this.
But you know.
Thank you, Ms. Holland. And, and I appreciate your comments. You can always write to myself and the council. And I would note that the three minutes we provide is probably, well, about thirty-three percent more than the legislature is going to provide at many of the bills and statutes that, that they consider. They only allow two minutes at some hearing. So I do understand your frustration. I've been on that side of the podium. I would appreciate if you put your thoughts in writing, share them with us. I will read them. I try to respond to all of them, so.
I know, but it doesn't make it, put it out in the comic, in the comp, in the.
Ether.
Ether.
You can write a letter to the editor.
I know, and I do, but this is, this, this is some quicky things.
Thank you, Madam, Ms. Holland. Appreciate, no, that's just during hearings. I was corrected. Thank you for taking the time and being engaged.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Look forward to talking to you.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Duquette.
How would you get those items on the agenda? Is that something we can put on an agenda?
A council member can, there is a process for putting anything the council wants on the agenda. Recommend you, you visit with the city clerk, city clerk about how a council member goes about.
I have put things on the agenda. I just wondered if those were items that we can work on together.
Items that are placed on the agenda and approved on the agenda can be discussed. Sometimes they're action items, sometimes they're just discussion. Anyone else, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not aware of anyone else. No one else has signed up to speak and there are no hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you. That will conclude our public comment portion of this evening. Meeting, meeting will now proceed with the consent calendar. For the record, the total amount of bills is five hundred and eighty-seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty-one cents for regular payables. Counsel, do you have any questions or is there anything you wish to remove from the consent calendar? I will entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
No move.
Second. Moved by Council President Rule, second by someone to my right, Councilman Howarth. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Sprow.
Yes.
Counselor Duquette.
Yes.
Counselor Dick.
Yes.
Counselor Rule.
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber.
Yes.
Counselor Howard.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to item thirteen, public hearing. Previously, the city announced a public hearing for this evening regarding the development agreement for the university place pays for planned unit development. Because it was determined that this application has expired, the public hearing has been canceled. Moving on to old business number fourteen. During our January fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting, council voted to postpone a decision and reopen the hearing on the appeal of denial of the McGee Development Water Service application during the evening, during this evening's meeting in order to accept additional testimony for the applicant and city staff. We have subsequently engaged and legal counsel in engineering is working with the appellant. And we are in discussion. We believe that this will be digested by the appellant and we expect to bring this back either April sixteenth or early May. Legal might have an update. If not, I would entertain a motion to postpone this item to council's May seventh meeting. Removed that way. That was moved by Councilman Dick, second by Councilman Espiro. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Rule.
Yes.
Counselor Dick.
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber.
Yes.
Counselor Sprow.
Yes.
Counselor Howard.
Yes.
Counselor Duquette.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. For the final item on the agenda, there's no new business. For the final item on the agenda, entertain a motion to convene an executive session pursuant to IDO Code seventy-four, two oh six, one F. For the purpose of communicating with legal counsel, discuss the legal ramifications and legal options for pending litigation or controversy not yet being litigated, but immediately likely to be litigated.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Schreiber, second by Rule. This will be a roll call vote.
Counselor Duquette.
Yes.
Counselor Dick.
Yes.
Counselor Schreiber.
Yes.
Counselor Rule.
Yes.
Counselor Howard.
Yes.
Counselor Sprow.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, motion passes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, I would ask everyone not participating in the session to exit the room. The meeting recording will now end. Good night and thank you, everyone, for attending and participating in your local government.